All right. Welcome to the May 7th council meeting. What a great crowd. What a bunch of people that have come to be proud of their friends and I'm pumped up about that. I want to tell you, this is nothing but right that I share this with you guys. I got some mail. I got mail. No. But, one of the letters is addressed to Mr. John Gummerson. How cool. How cool. He would be proud of everybody sitting here and everyone that's fixing to move up here and he would certainly be proud of y'all for coming and supporting. Thank you. Anyway, okay. Don, I'm gonna let you, you know, we came to an old boring council meeting and we're gonna have the start of a high school football game. We got an honor guard here. So, pretty cool deal, huh? All right, Don, if you'd come and bring a prayer, please? Everybody stand, please?
First of all, I just want to thank Chuck for the good job you did. You're a good friend and I love you to death, Betty. Love the council, too. Would you pray with me, please? Father, we just thank you for our servants that have served over these last few years on the council and serving our community and doing their very best and we thank you for the great work that they've done. We thank you for Chuck as mayor and all the good things that he has done and how he's represented our community throughout the state and other states and we just want to thank you for his service. But Father, we want to thank you for you and all that you do for us and the blessings that we have and being our Creator, bringing our God and our Savior. I just want to thank you for all that you've done for us and I ask, Father, tonight, that you'll be with this council at this meeting as we change the guard and we just ask your blessing upon it. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Gentlemen, post the colors.
We'd like to ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You know, I think this would be a great time to do this. Don, thank you for being with me for six years, my brother. Some of them been easy and some of them ain't been so easy. And I want to pass the word, Don has sold his old hot rod and it's going to Chicago, Illinois. So, I think a guy named Baby Face Nelson bought it. I don't, I don't know that to be the gospel, but... Council, I give you the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve item A on a consent agenda at this time.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
All the votes are in?
Yes, ma'am. Show us how we felt. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hazelwood is now with us. All right. We are adjourned from Guthrie Public Works and a call to order the Guthrie City Council Community Announcements and Recognition. Having none, all right, we will move on. The consent agenda, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd make a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and E.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Yes, ma'am. Show us how we felt. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. All right, recognition of service. You know, I've been on the council six years, three terms, and I was gonna stay until I could get my wife a $6 burger at Carl Jr.'s. But, in a little while, I'd like to ask the pastor to pass the hat. I'm gonna need a little help with waffle fries. She loves waffle fries, so... There's my reasoning. Everybody wanted to know why I took it for six years. There you are. Z, would you come down here, my brother? Gaylord Z Thomas, great friend of mine, a level head on this council that has always done the... Yeah. You know, I knew you'd do something, so I've got a V8 juice here, so... Done a great job for me, son. You've been a great support and you've always been someone I come to, to talk to and have a little head, know what, which direction that we want this city, go through this community. Thank you very much, my friend.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we've been in lots of blue jay games. My sweet Mary.
Where are ya?
My wife's probably getting dressed up right now for that $6 burger. Depends on how Don does. Mary is a saint. She is the greatest thing that's walked on this council. Her energy is incredible. If, when you see the lights at Christmas, you know, when Mary gets to heaven, you know, 150 years from now, I think they'll turn the lights on downtown. She works so hard to make it happen. And again, you walk the mile for this community and the community appreciates you and this way you serve because everything grows and I appreciate it. Dr. John R. Wood. Don, I think you're getting better at looking, be as you've aged. Dollar looks the same. Huh? Oh, walk like this?
Sorry.
We've done two and now we're moving. John, you know, you carry a heavy load being a professor and I know that and, but I don't know of meetings unless you're overseas with that beautiful wife of yours that you're not here. And that says a lot to drive to Oklahoma City every day deep and come back and be informed and make the right decisions and I'm proud to have you as a friend.
Thank you, Mary.
Vice Mayor, Trey has been standing beside me for about four years now and you talk about a young man that works hard raising his kids in this community, trying to make it a great thing. He's proud of this community. When he's any kind of civic duty that he can be there for or help support, Trey's there. And we've tore a lot of hamburgers up after a council meeting.
And a lot of hair out.
Yeah. You got a full head of hair when you hired on and, but, and what about the voting? Huh? That may be my next move, 'cause I don't, I always get one about this long and the other one's down around my knees, so that vote tie may be my move, brother. Trey, thanks for everything you've done. Thank you for being great support for me and I wish you a lot of luck in the next year, Council. Thank you, my brother. Thank you. Now, last, but well, my last is Sherry Mueller. Would you come on? You're the first one that's gonna get your name tag. Everybody else were after stealing. Sherry came on this council after I interviewed her and I just know what her heart is for this community and I'm just so proud to have you and your family as friends and she's always stood up for me and I promise you, I'll always stand up for you. So, Sherry had to move out of her area because of health problems and, and the whole family was kinda struggling, so she had to move out. She was straight up, she sent me a letter of resignation and I haven't had many of them in six years, but, and I... But, she's just an incredible lady. I'll always love her and you don't have to be a councilman to beat that. And hang this coaster in front though where, so your husband knows who's boss. If I get, no, I'll just have to stay here, I can't get it up.
I think he already goes.
He does? I'm sorry, Bill.
Without the use of notes, I may not do very well in my speech, so I can't promise you all the laughs and things that Mayor Burcher's always gotten, so the staff has put together a farewell speech to our mayor. The city employees find it to be appropriate to celebrate the years of public service of Mayor Chuck Burcher. His service symbolizes what is good and what is decent about our community. During his six years, six-year tenure as mayor and 25 years as City of Guthrie firefighter, retiring as a captain, Mayor Chuck Burcher has exemplified the role of a public servant. He has served on the Airport Board, 89er Committee, and countless other committees in our community. In addition to service in his formal roles, his service is much more far-reaching and he is a citizen that has utilized his role to better the community, such as his recent successful efforts in speaking with federally elected officials with Job Corps. Additionally, Chuck is known to gather some of his closest buddies and mow the cottonwood flats in an effort to support the city. We'd also like to thank Sandra for sharing Chuck's time with us. I can't imagine that to be easy. The late evening meetings and the early morning coffees took him from, from your home to ours. Winston Churchill once said that courage is what it takes to stand up and speak. Courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen. You've been our leader of courage that knows when to listen to the people. You're relieving your role as mayor and you've left this city in a much better place. This staff couldn't have asked for a higher task for you to accomplish and our reward is the enrichment we have gained from supporting you. Your legacy and sacrifice will remain very much alive in this place. Your dedication to public service has made an outstanding impact on this community and improved all lives around you. Your lifelong devotion to this community will never be forgotten. We wish you the best in your future endeavors and enjoy your time with little stress. And on behalf of the city staff that has supported and loved you, we would like to provide keys to the city. And a lovely picture. It says on there, "For Mayor Chuck Burcher, May 2007 to May 2013." The quote is, "No one can drive us crazy unless we give him the keys." Here's a set of keys for each city department and we welcome you to drive. And here's that dollar that you've spunk him out for quite some time. Sandra, he's coming home.
Now, I want to tell you guys just right off the top, none of these opened that toilet across.
And Chuck, here's your nameplate.
I've been stripped.
And if you would like to make any closing remarks, we'd be happy to listen and then you may adjourn your 61st council for your final meeting.
We'd like to do that. Thank you. Thank you very much. I couldn't be a mayor without the people that you see sitting around here. They make my job really, really easy. I'm just so proud of this community. You know what it says for the title of the mayor? It says that you're the honorary spokesman for this community and I've took that to heart. Sometimes, some people say, "Man, where'd that guy come from?" But, I really tried to carry the first capital of the state, Oklahoma, high above everybody, haven't I missed any?
Yes, right, you have.
Mayor, Mayor, yes. When I go to Water Resource Board meetings, I'll always come up and when I introduce myself, I say, "I'm Chuck Burcher. I'm the mayor of the first capital of Oklahoma." And they always say, "You're having a hard time getting over that, aren't you?" Yes, I am. But I wouldn't have mixed headaches for all of it. I love this community. I love the wonderful things this community does, our fire, our police officers, the guys on the street out there when you don't see them at 3:00 in the morning and a tree's blown down across the highway, the boys that are standing knee-deep in cold water to make sure you've got a toilet that flushes and a water line that works and quality water. Those are the people that make Guthrie what it is, not this mayor. And my hat is off to them and I've done 31 years with them and I will miss these people and this community. But I'm not going anywhere. Wait a minute, where is, where's the judge at? He don't, he don't have any, you don't have any paperwork on me, do you? Okay, I'm not going anywhere. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for your heart. You know, since I've been mayor, I've learned that I don't have to get them to agree with me or anything. This council, the 61st council, is adjourned. At my age, I know it's hard to stand up, so I'm on your team.
All right. If Mayor-elect Mark Sbradlin will please come forward for swearing of oath of office, we have the Honorable Special District Judge Rob Hudson here today.
Thank you very much, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity. It's an honor and a privilege for me to be able to participate this evening and this great occasion and very much thank you for that opportunity. Mayor-elect, soon-to-be mayor, I'd ask you to raise your right hand and let's make you official. I, Mark Sbradlin.
Mark Sbradlin.
And you repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And of the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And of the City Charter of the City of Guthrie.
And the City Charter of the City of Guthrie.
And will discharge my, the duties of my office.
And will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That I have not paid.
That I have not paid.
Or contributed.
Or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable things.
To procure my nomination.
To procure my nomination.
And election.
And election.
As mayor.
As mayor.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not knowingly.
That I have not knowingly.
Violated any election law of the state.
Violated any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done by others.
Or procured it to be done by others.
In my behalf.
In my behalf.
That I will not knowingly.
That I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining.
Of any act or duty pertaining.
To my office of mayor.
To my office as mayor.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will not receive.
That I will not receive.
Use or travel.
Use or travel.
Upon any free pass.
Upon any free pass.
Or on any free transportation.
Or upon any free transportation.
During my term in office.
During my term in office.
And it's my honor to now declare you duly sworn in and elected as mayor of the City of Guthrie. Congratulations. So now, we're gonna do the rest of them together?
And now, if we can have Cheryl Paget, Jeff Taylor, Z Thomas, and John Wood approach the front and go wherever it is that the judge places you.
Well, I know where I'd like to place Jeff. That's fine, just behind there. Gather around the mayor, if you will. I couldn't help that, Jeff. If any of you know Jeff and you know me, we grew up together and this is a great day. It's a scary day for the community, actually. And I would be doing this and he would be being sworn in. I'd like for all of you to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Very good. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Charter of the City of Guthrie.
The Charter of the City of Guthrie.
And will discharge the duties of my office.
And will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
That I have not paid or contributed.
That I have not paid or contributed.
Either directly or indirectly.
Either directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
To procure my nomination or election.
Procure my nomination or election.
And in your case, Ms. Paget, or appointment.
Or appointment.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Except for necessary and proper expenses.
Expressly authorized by law.
Expressly authorized by law.
That I have not knowingly.
That I have not knowingly.
Violated any election law of the state.
Violated any election law of the state.
Or procured it to be done.
Or procured it to be done.
By others on my behalf.
By others on my behalf.
That I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For performance or non-performance.
For performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I will not receive.
That I will not receive.
Use.
Use.
Or travel upon.
Or travel upon.
Any free pass.
Any free pass.
Or on free transportation.
Or on free transportation.
During my term of office.
During my term of office.
And you may lower your hands. It's my pleasure to declare you the duly-elected councilman and women, woman, of your ward as so-elected. Let's give him a hand. Congratulations.
Thank you. And if the newly-elected and appointed would join us?
Now, the call starts.
Oh, good. Yes, thank you. Call the meeting to order? Oh.
Can you hear me now? I call the 62nd City Council Meeting to Order. We have a consent agenda, items A, B, and C. Recommend approval on all these. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Council members, cast your vote.
Chairman, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote, please. Unanimous. Motion carried. Thank you. Appointment of three council members to the Finance Committee. Z Thomas, Trey Ayers, if y'all will continue to serve, please. Mary Coffin, chair of that committee, please. All right. Appointment to the Street Committee, Cheryl Paget and Jeff Taylor, if y'all will be on it. And John, if you will chair that to help them get going, please, sir.
We need a vote on that.
Let's go back to item number three. I apologize. And have a motion and a second and a call to vote for Finance Committee.
All right. For the Finance Committee, Z Thomas, Trey Ayers, and Mary Coffin, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
And display your votes, please.
Hey, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote, please. Thank you, unanimous. For number four, Street Committee, Cheryl Paget, Jeff Taylor, John Wood, I need a motion and a second, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the votes, please. Unanimous, thank you very much. Mayor's appointment for one city council member for the ACOG, I'd like to recommend John Wood for that. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote. Thank you, unanimous. Appointment for the Guthrie Transportation Authority, I'm gonna recommend John Wood just for some stability for a little bit, all right? I need a motion and a second on that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote. Thank you, unanimous. Consider approval appointments to the Citizen Fee and Rate and Fee Advisory Committee. This is all the council members and then you, the council members will pick one person from each of their wards. I recommend that as it's, we talked earlier, it remain the same as it is right now and the ones who haven't selected yet will do so in the near future. I'd like a motion and a second on that one, please.
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
Yeah, can I add one comment? I'll go ahead and, I'm gonna go ahead and reapprove Duell Fortney was our, for Ward One, was representing for, on my behalf. I just thought I'd go ahead and leave his name on there.
Okay.
So it's noted. Thank you.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote. Thank you. Consideration for Vice Mayor for a term of two years. I would like to ask the council to approve my nomination of John Wood as Vice Mayor. I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Cast your votes, please.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote, please. Thank you. Item number nine, I'm gonna give it to the City Manager.
Number nine is to open a public hearing and consider approval of a request by Larry and Jane Williams for a special use permit to allow a manufactured home in an area zoned R1 located at 1423 West Warner Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission did hear the request and denied the special use permit application and staff supports the, the recommendation of denial for a special use permit of a manufactured home in a single residential area.
All right. And if I understand this vote right, if we vote yes, that means denial, correct?
It's a public hearing, no, we got...
I'm sorry, allow anyone to speak.
Are Larry and Jane Williams here? Is anybody else here to speak in favor of or against this, this item? All right, we need a motion and a second, please.
I'll move this time to deny, on a move to deny the zone R1, single-family residential, or the approval for a special use permit.
Second. Council, cast your votes.
Mayor, all the votes are in?
Show us the vote, please. Thank you. Thank you. City Managers report?
Sure, you may notice, we've started out the 62nd council a little bit differently as far as what you see in your packet. Every council meeting, I will place the claims section in your packet, so you can see what payments have been made from the city through accounts payables, but that we're choosing to not have the council vote on that. As you may or may not know, there's many councils that don't vote on it, and the best way that I can explain it is if you approve a budget at the beginning of the year, and then we go and buy a sack of concrete, and then we go put that concrete down on the ground, and two weeks later you deny the claim, I'm not sure how I'm going to get the concrete out of the ground and send it back. And so therefore, I still want to be very transparent in our government and provide for you a list of all claims, which we will continue to do, but I ask that we not vote on it for the fear of watching me pull concrete out of the ground. I wanted to also share with you that recently Sue DeCharme hosted a Neighborhood Solutions meeting over in the Cottonwood area, which is a really booming and growing group of dedicated individuals. ODOT was their special, was their speaker, and was able to talk about the Viaduct in detail, show renderings. The ODOT is hosting a town hall meeting at some date, and I'll keep you apprised of that date for the public, to ask questions about the Viaduct, and we'll bring to you a workshop prior to that point. So we're excited about the progress and the work that's going on to replace the Viaduct. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Request or comments from members of the City Council. Zee, do you have anything you want to?
Not really. Just glad to be back and proud of this fourth dollar. I guess I won't be long, I can buy a burger at...
There you go.
Yeah, really.
Mary Coffin?
Well, I just want to, again, thanks for the mayor and for all the hard work he's done, and he's done a great job, and I don't think there's enough can be said about what he's done for our community, and I really appreciate it, and I think everybody knows how much you love Guthrie. You definitely show it wherever you go, no matter what you do. We know that you really care about Guthrie, so thank you for your service. It's definitely been a pleasure to work with you. I do have a couple of announcements that are community announcements. The Pollard is showing the Avenue Q until the 18th of this month, and Byron Burline has got a show, I believe, on the 18th as well. Not too much going on in the month of May, but we'll gather some steam up here in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, Vice Mayor.
All right. I want to say a good job to the Blue Jay baseball team and track teams for going to state. That takes a lot of work and dedication to go to state, so congratulations. Mayor Chuck, and I'm going to always say, anyway, probably years from now, I'll say Mayor Chuck, you know? I just, I'll have to translate, you know? So anyway, so Mayor Chuck, thank you so much for your friendship and your mentorship over the years. I really appreciate it. There's a large learning curve when it comes to city council right at the beginning, so it was nice to have Mayor Chuck's counsel and guidance through that process. So I really appreciate your time in giving up six years of your life to be on council and making the big bucks and doing so. So, you know, it does take a lot of sacrifice. This is a volunteer job, and so I really want to say, actually, thank you all for actually taking up the job here as city council. You know, we're taking about $7 worth of the budget up here tonight, so, but that doesn't reflect all the time and effort that these guys put in. I mean, we put in a lot of time at the workshop. We took, put time on council, but we, there's a lot of time you don't see that we have to prepare, we have to kind of, we have to know what's going on. We keep up, we ask questions of Serena.
Yes, he does.
And I definitely do. So, anyway, it does take a lot of time and effort, and so I just want to thank everybody on the council for serving. You guys don't have to do this, certainly, and sometimes you probably don't want to, but, but anyway. And thank you all for having the confidence in me to put me in the Vice Mayor position, so I do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Cheryl, any comments or?
I do, I do. I want to thank Chuck Burcher for his vote of confidence, and the 61st council for appointing me to this position, and I really appreciate it, and I'm going to have fun.
Jeff?
I just wanted to say thank you as well to Chuck. You know, I'll be coming by to see you every now and then, and you can tell me what needs to happen, or if I'm doing something wrong, hold my hand or whatever.
I hate to weeve you, guy.
Okay, I can do that. I'll do that. I like that. Wanted to say thanks to Rob for coming up and swearing us all in, and I think that was a great deal. I've always wanted to have somebody like that, one of my friends, come up and do that. Want to say thank you to my church family that came tonight, as well as my wife and my daughter. And I see there's Marines here tonight, too, so my dad would have liked that as well. And, oh, and my mother's here as well, so that's kind of my, I had this big speech planned, but I was told, no, can't do it, so.
Yeah, right.
Welcome to the club. Thank you.
Trey?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a minute. Once again, I'll be re-echoing comments of others regarding Mayor Chuck Burcher, but six years ago, he came in as a new mayor, and today he leaves as a great friend on top of everything else. And he's one of those, he's a legend, you know, in town. Everybody knows him, everybody knows about him, and, you know, we, you opened up with John Gummerson, and I love John to death, and you guys are both just pinnacle mentors to me, so I appreciate you. And on top of that, welcome the new mayor, as well as our new council. I'm excited as we forge ahead in our community. I look forward to the opportunities. I look forward to the difficult challenges that we'll face together, and we will have some. But we will work through those issues, and we'll strive to make this community better, which is always our intention, and that's our hearts as we sit up here today. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Chuck, I got one comment. You still owe me a fishing trip, and you've never given it to me yet, so.
You send that cow, lick the paint off of your truck. I haven't forgotten that.
You remember that, didn't you? All right.
I've got one place to take you, and you have to hide behind the tree to bait your hook. A lot of fish there.
We'll go there.